And would you call the roll, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Jason Blair.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb. Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And that would bring us to item two, which will be our consent docket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held June 7th, 2021. B, receive minutes of the regular parks board meeting held May 4th, 2021. C is adopt resolution number 99421 approving the May 2021 Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program Internal Audit Report. D is accept a donation of a permanent roadway easement and utility easement for Milo Leasing, Inc. and Oklahoma Corporation in exchange for a conveyance of a 20-foot strip from adjacent parcel two for construction of additional parking with access from Southeast 3rd Street and a dumpster pad to allow for maintenance and construction of the Southeast 4th Street Railroad Underpass Project. E is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020-2021 in the amount of $1,998,635.31.
Motion to approve, second.
We have had a motion and a second. Do you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Jason Blair.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item three is consider approval of ordinance number 97221 amending Part 12, Chapter 5, Article J by removing current drainage regulations for development within the City of Moore and adopting a stormwater management criteria update manual as drainage regulations for the City of Moore. And this is Community Development.
Mayor and council, excuse me. I'm going to give just a very brief rundown of some of the changes that we've made. We started this process about two years ago. And during that time, we've made several different compromises with the development community on nine separate issues. I have included this in a memo in your packet, and I'm more than happy to stop and answer any questions. But for the sake of brevity, I'm just going to kind of flip through here. Some of the issues that have been recently brought up have already been addressed in previous compromises, such as using the use of HydroCAD program instead of the HMES program, as well as the riparian buffer issue and the open space detention maintenance easement to 15 feet. Those are items that we've already compromised on. And here are some more compromises, as I said, there were nine. The last time that we met, the council asked us to take in more suggestions from the development community and consider those suggestions, and that's what we've done. We had a list submitted by one of our engineers, who does a lot of work in Moore, and we have discussed each and every one of them. We, my city staff and Mischak Engineering Associates, did decide to accept two additional changes to the criteria based on those new suggestions. This one, the number one, was taking the stormwater detention table number two, and instead of requiring the two-foot of freeboard, we instead decided to refer to the OWRB table for standards. That is a state entity, and every engineer should be following those recommendations anyways. So we adopted that table to be placed in these proposal, this proposal. Another change that we accepted was, there was a graph that was being used to calculate some overland flow. You might have remembered this graph, it's had a lot of discussion points to it. And our consultant did recognize that perhaps there was a different way to calculate the overland flow using an equation that's in the National Engineering Handbook instead of the graph. So that was another change that was made. There were five changes that the consultants declined to make, basically because in their minds, their charge is to come up with a proposal that will eliminate, to the greatest extent practical, the flooding within the community. And they feel strongly that these issues contribute to that flooding and want to see that corrected if possible. So the changes that they declined were the future urbanization to require just one foot of freeboard. They believe it should be two feet. The reason is because the past flooding events did get into houses that were constructed one foot above the base flood elevation, so they feel that that is not adequate. Additional height needs to be added. The bridge sizes and culverts requiring two feet of freeboard between the 100-year water surface elevation and the soffit of any culvert that is, has a greater width of 20 feet. So these are going to be mostly culverts underneath roads. The two-foot was in the proposal to allow for some clogging of debris or siltation, so it doesn't overtop that onto roadways. We feel that that is important, and the other culverts that aren't 20 feet wide have separate requirements that don't require the two feet of freeboard. The rational method runoff coefficient uses, the proposal uses a Wright-McLaughlin modifier. And again, they feel like that this is the appropriate modifier to use to account for increased impervious surface and decreased filtration. And there is a, in the general design criteria, we talked about a maintenance easement around detention ponds. It was originally set at 20 during previous discussions, we came down to 15. The development community requested five feet. And because this is for maintenance, five feet just simply isn't wide enough. We need enough room to get a vehicle down and some stacking room if we needed to do any repairs to stack earthen debris. So we feel that 15-foot is the minimum that is necessary for maintenance. And this is probably the topic of the most discussion, I would say. This is going to be the rational method versus the unit hydrograph method. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about this because I do have the consultant here who can help you with a real-life example. But basically, the unit hydrograph, this is something that we would require for drainage basins over 20 acres. And it is a different way of doing a calculation. The development community did request that it be changed to be used for anything over 40 acres. But again, because we have real-life examples of how this impacts people's property, we did feel that limiting it to 20 was the right thing to do. I'm now going to turn it over to Kyle Miller with Mischak and Associates, and he does have a real-life example to kind of go through with you that looks at the kind of numbers that we're talking about. And this has to do with the Waters addition. I think you're familiar with where that's at. And there is a downstream property owner who is experiencing some heavy flooding on his property currently with heavy rains. So Kyle, I'm going to ask you to come up and explain the difference. And this is the clicker and this is the...
Good evening. My name is Kyle Miller. I'm a professional engineer with Mischak and Associates. So Elizabeth mentioned that we did some study on the Waters subdivision. And to start out, some of the things I did was to go straight to the drainage report that the developer had put together. And all the numbers that we see from these first columns under the modified rational method were from that drainage report. And then to compare, we produced our own hydrology using the NRCS method, the unit hydrograph method. And we're going to compare those outputs that the two methods produce. So the first thing I want to start off, kind of drawing your eye towards, is, and this table was only produced for the 1% annual chance flood, that is, the 100-year flood. So the first thing I want to kind of point out, under the modified rational method, is the, is the first row in the difference in historic versus developed flow going into the pond. As we can see, the developer noted that between the historic and developed, there would be an increase in the peak flow. It's a difference of 84 CFS. We also noticed the next row, there's an increase in the overall volume of water coming to that pond, 21 to 26. It's about five acre-feet difference. They designed their pond to mitigate that peak flow. So they brought, when we go to the third row, the flow out, we can see that they brought their developed peak flow to roughly one CFS below the historic flow. So that's, in following the current criteria, that's exactly what they did, is they designed their pond to mitigate that increase in peak flow. From there, I want to kind of change perspective on the data. So now I want to move, in the way I had to do this methodology, I had to look at the outfall at the property boundary, so between the waters and the next property downstream. In order to keep this simple, I didn't quite have all the pond data to be able to do a direct comparison between the ponds. So the next thing I want to look at is the difference in magnitudes between the two methods. So now if we're looking at the modified rational method, but the post-B outfall, those three columns, historic, developed, and the difference, and then we're going to be comparing that straight to the NRCS method, post-B outfall, historic, developed, and difference. There is a bit of ratio I had to do based on the historic developed, so if you are trying to add the numbers real quick, they won't be quite the same because I could not mitigate or reduce what the developer had in the modified rational method. I'm sorry, I said that backward. I could not, I didn't have the developed flow at the property boundary. So I basically took the ratio from what they had at the pond. So let me move forward on that. So one of the things I want to point out is the difference in magnitude. So in the flow between the two methods, and if you look all the way to the right to some of the highlighted green sections, the historic difference in flows is roughly two and a half times greater, almost 250%. The NRCS method is predicting that that flow is going to be that much larger in magnitude. And the same thing goes with the developed. We see over twice the amount of peak flow between the two methods. We go down to the volume, and we see an increase again between, from the NRCS to the modified rational method. The NRCS is predicting an increase of four and a half times the volume that the modified rational predicted. In the historic and then in the developed, it's about three and a half times. So that's a significant amount of difference that has to be accounted for. Some of the next things I want to point out are the differences in how we calculate the storm duration. It's the third row from the bottom. So what the modified rational method does is it bases a storm based off the size of the watershed. So he followed, they followed those procedures correctly. They developed a storm duration that was about 45 minutes. It's almost three-quarters of an hour. In our procedure, we would produce a storm that's 24 hours. So we would take that 100-year storm for here in Moore, which is nine and a quarter inches, and we would basically spread that out over 24 hours. We'd have a little bit of rainfall starting at the beginning, and then we would ramp up into a high intensity, and then we would taper off as we reach nine and a quarter hours in that 24-hour duration. So you can see the difference between the two methods. We have a difference of 23.3 hours. And then at the final row at the bottom, we also have the final rainfall difference. So the NRCS method is predicting at least about five inches more than the modified rational method is in both historic and developed. So in concluding this table here, one of the things that's going to be key are these magnitudes. So you're talking about two to four times the magnitude in both the peak and the volume that in this design that was built is not being accounted for. And that's something that we feel like is happening a lot in the City of Moore and we're seeing in flooding, is that these volumes and these peaks just weren't accounted for. And that's not to try and point fingers or anything. It's really part of our profession to look at our methods and understand them and change them as new studies and new methods come about. Our industry is constantly evolving, trying to be more precise and more accurate, and sometimes that requires changing the things that we do.
So basically, just so I'm clear, the ponds that were designed and engineered for, since we're talking about the waters, is that the one that we're looking at?
Right.
Was not designed to handle the capacity of water for the peak flows? And that's what's causing a lot of the...
Well, I'm not, I don't want to state one way or another that, because I've not gone into such a detail that I could state that there is an issue or what has exactly caused that issue. But there is an issue. I do not have enough evidence to state that. I am pointing out that the developer did design the ponds to mitigate the peak flows as they were required to do.
Right. But the other model would allow for a bigger facility to hold water?
Yes.
Based on this other formula, this different formula than the one we're currently using?
Yes, the other model, the other method would have increased the size of the facility of the detention systems and the stormwater infrastructure overall to be able to handle the larger flows that we predict and the larger volume that we predict.
Okay.
And it's a combination of volume, of capacity, and discharge. And you have to be able to control both of those, so.
Okay.
The problem you don't want to run into here is you don't want to, the modified rational method designs for that, you know, let's say, three-quarter an hour, hour storm. And you can have that intensity, that's great. The problem is going to be, is when you have that lower amount of rainfall earlier in the day, and you've already filled up your pond, you've already lost some of that volume, and your intensity wraps up. So by the time that bigger amount of flood comes in from that larger rain system, your pond is already partially full, and you've lost that volume. And so now more water's having to go out.
And you've already saturated the ground around it, and so nothing else can soak in.
Okay, all right. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I just have one more point on the NRCS method. So timing is also crucial in tying the whole watershed together to see how your design impacts everything else downstream. So when we talk about trying to limit even a rational design for a storm sewer system to 20 acres, the point of that is to limit how much a storm sewer can affect the timing in a watershed. So a storm sewer system, if you put water into a concrete pipe, it's going to increase the velocity and shoot that water out. It's going to greatly increase or decrease the time it takes for that water to get from point A to point B. And so that's why when we start to get to these larger watersheds, we want to be able to account for that timing change.
Thank you. I don't think he's done.
I do want to, I do want to go over one graph. There are a couple more tables, but it's all of the same material. So you've seen one, you've seen all of them. Real quick, this is a good example of the unit hydrograph. So it can be a bit tricky to see, but the historic or the predeveloped is in red. This is the flow rate of a flood as it builds up due to a storm. And this is most likely based off a synthetic rainfall that we would do in a model because it's shortly after the midday. So you would have a slow ramp up in that red, you can see, and then we get to the peak rainfall, and you get the peak flood to just over, looks like about 40 CFS in this example. When we develop this same area, we see the dark, the dark blue line is not only above the red line across the entire, this is over an 18-hour spectrum duration. The dark blue line is not only above the entire red line, which is prehistoric, but the peak is also vastly greater. It's roughly 83 CFS. So about 40 to 83 CFS from going from historic undeveloped to a developed area. Then what we do is we design that detention pond. And we put the detention pond in, and that is, the point of that is, and it's in the light blue line, is to reduce that developed peak back down to the historic level, to the prehistoric red peak. And that's exactly what happens in this example, is the detention pond reduces that peak and allows that water to detain and slowly release out. The catch here is that, I want to go back to what I stated about the developed line being higher than the predeveloped, the historic. When you take the area under each of these curves, that is the amount of volume. So you can see when you go from a historic or predeveloped, you have a specific amount of volume. And then when you go to post and developed, you have even more volume due to that development. You have impervious area that creates more runoff. One of the things you cannot get rid of is the extra volume. You can change the peak flow and adjust the timing as you need to, but you cannot get rid of that extra volume. Matter is neither created nor destroyed here. We don't have a black hole to get rid of that extra water. We can only delay it. And I think this is where Moore is seeing a lot of their problems, is with this extra volume. This is the point of trying to anticipate what the watershed is doing and trying to give enough freeboard so that anything is generally unanticipated, you know, we have some extra insurance to play with. If any of you have any questions, real quick, I could take some of those.
No questions, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kyle. We appreciate it.
Elizabeth, do you... Okay, is there anybody else that wanted to say anything about this? Okay, just come on up, state your name and address.
My name is Marvin Hayworth. I live at 2800 Shady Creek Lane in Moore. I'm a home builder and developer here in Moore, and I am also a past president of the Home Builders Association, and I'm also here representing myself and the Home Builders Association. And we are still opposed to this as it is written at this time. We've asked for some modifications. And I think it would have been appropriate for this graph that we were shown to have used the rationale method and not the modified rationale method to show the difference between two projects at 40 acres, less than 40 acres. This project is not a 40-acre project that we were shown tonight. So it's not representative of what we were asking to be done with 40 acres using the rationale method. This was the modified rationale method, which is different than the rationale. The other thing, main point that I'll make is we would like to see the pond berms at five feet unless it's absolutely necessary for maintenance of that pond. We don't need to make them all 15 feet, just for no reason, just arbitrarily. If you need room to get to them, to maintain them, then I would agree. We need the 15 feet because you can't run a piece of equipment on five feet, and we all know that. And so, again, I am opposed to it in its present form. I would like to see it sent back again. I'd like to see a graph showing the 40 acres project using the rationale method, not the modified rationale, and not a 80 or 100-acre project which we were shown tonight. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, just come up here, and if you'll just state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ryan Stewart. My address is a 20-acre example that was there, 1201 Northeast 27th Street. I prepared packets for you guys.
Okay.
The pilot did a great job.
Yeah, just pass, you can just pass them out.
You can pass them around.
Yeah, we'll pass them down.
Just give me the whole state.
Thank you.
These packets are for you to read. I'm not going to go through the whole packet. There's pictures and evidence in front of you. My trade, I'm an electrical engineer, so I've got an engineering background. I've also grown up doing excavation, dirt work, house pads, commercial stuff with my father, who's in construction in a different city. I just want to bring to you today a residence perspective on this issue. This property is a prime example of why the rationale method does not work on this big of a drainage basin. Those numbers he was showing, you can talk models all day long, just like when we watch the weather, weathermen use the models. Sometimes they hit it, sometimes they miss it big, right? You need the real evidence, the real data in front of you to see it. That happens on this property. Talking to the Waters Engineering Group, I have a friend that I graduated with that works there, he estimated there's about 300 acres that drain in that basin that will meet at different points on my 20-acre property. The rationale method, when I looked up and did my research, is not intended to be used by several entities on acreages, drainage acreages equal to 100 or 200 or greater acres. And so this method was, the rationale method was used on the Waters neighborhood, and I am seeing that two and a half times flow rate and volume increase since the development started right behind my 20 acres. We lived there long enough that we've seen that happen. One of the other things I want you guys to consider when you're looking at these changes to the drainage criteria, pre and post, obviously is something that is very important. Actual measurements on the pre and post inflow downstream residents, businesses, whoever's downstream needs to happen, actual measurements, models don't work. And the other thing that I'd like to bring up is that, that, you know, Kyle mentioned the TCs, the time of concentration. That is something that is big with the Waters addition. The roads that they put in, I've got roads that are like 500-foot long that end in a cul-de-sac on my property. And at the end of that cul-de-sac, there's a flume. That flume was put right deadheaded into my tree on my property. They reached over and put riprap. So there needs to be some sort of regulations on these guys to control, the developers to control their water before it's released onto us. That 500-foot-long road, it takes on water from other roads to come to it, and the time of concentration is increased like that. So that's one simple point. You'll see those pictures in there. But I want to invite you guys, if you're doing your study, both sides, developers, anyone, come look at this property and see what it's dealing with, but what we're dealing with here. It'll show that there are instances where rationale method may work, but in this instance, it doesn't. It's pretty obvious. The other thing I want to point out is this property existed, was built, that I live on, was built in '93. The house pad was built with the dirt removed out of the pond. And the acreage behind where the Waters addition is built, part of that acreage belonged to that homeowner at the time. That pond, drainage basin area in that time, the pond was able to handle the water. And it handled the water until about a year and a half ago when somewhere... and it handled the water until about a year and a half ago, when, somewhere within the last year and a half, when development started. They had lowered the pond dam, widened the spillway, so there's your extra volume. You don't have the detention time. The storage that was existed in the pond, because the rationale method showed that the numbers weren't there to justify leaving the pond dam up four foot. They cut it down, they widened the throat of that spillway by about ten to twenty feet, I mean, by about ten to twelve feet. So I am severely being damaged by this. And I'm also going to come and ask that, I have not had any more communications with the developer, so I'm asking the city tonight and the mayor to revoke permits, building permits, to revoke occupancy permits, and to not plat any more of that property until we all can come together and come up with a solution that's going to fix my situation before it becomes more damaged. And that cost should not be passed on to me as a Moore resident who was preexisting to this development. I'm just asking for consideration whenever you guys go through your negotiations on all these ordinances and stuff, that you keep the residents in mind as well.
And you didn't have this flooding problem before the Waters development?
Nope. And there will be some claims that we've had way too much rain, too hard. The max rainfall in a given hour has been high in the last several rainstorms. If you go back and look at that in my packet here, in the May thirty-first rain, that was a six-hour rain that totaled one point four inches. That rainfall overran my pond that normally has a storage of about two foot, you know, in an acre and a quarter pond, surface area pond. That has not happened. I'm taking on silt. Silt fences are blown, so I'm taking on silt, and I understand that happens. And the developer did help. They came in and tried to fix the silt fences. They tried to put riprap in the bottom of that wide-throated spillway that they built, but that doesn't do it. You've got to narrow it. You can't just raise it. You've got to narrow it. And those are some of the things that you can't fix when you go with a rationale method that gets you so low-level numbers when the numbers are actually here. You can't come back and fix half the problems. You've got to tear it all out and start over. But the problem that I'm seeing is true detention and storage time. That is the problem with the property north of me that drains on me. That's what needs to be fixed. And a lot of the people in the community, in the civil engineering community, will use retention-detention ponds loosely. I'm talking detention like a controlled spigot at the bottom. The pond doesn't hold water unless there's a rainfall event. It's only meant for storage. If you allow them to call retention ponds detention ponds, then basically a retention pond is full with a spillway. So what comes in goes out. And when you get max flow into that pond that exceeds the spillway, it's going to start flowing over the dam, and you've got that sheet flow going on now. I'm seeing sheet flow left and right, and that's very erosive to my property. So I thank you for your time and just want to offer up my property for you guys to look at. It's a great model. It's not a one-size-fits-all for every situation. I get that. Rational method shouldn't be used in a situation like mine, but it could be used in others. I'm not the expert these guys are, but I thank you for your time.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And I think we have, somebody want to make a motion on this?
So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair. Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
No.
Before we move on, can, are you guys working with the homeowner here? Is there something we can do as far as, I mean, I don't know if we can revoke permits, but, yeah, a meeting or something that we can work with him? I say you guys, sorry, staff.
I mean, as far as my department is concerned, they, I mean, are, in most regards, complete with the development of the project. They're starting on their last phase right now. They already have water and sewer in, so they're working on the streets. I don't think legally there's anything that we can do to stop them because they met the code as it exists at the time that it was developed. Now, I know they've been having discussions with the city manager's office. I'm not aware of what those are, but as far as my department, they didn't do anything wrong necessarily.
Right.
They followed code that was in effect at the time.
And that's what we're trying to fix.
Right.
Yeah, one of the things, you know, when the engineer had the numbers up and everything, Moore's quite an unusual place. I'm the only mayor that's had two F-five tornadoes in his term, and of any place in the world, we've had six tornadoes in the last fifteen years, and all of us as council members experienced that. We've had two rains this year of over two inches an hour. So those don't really apply. We have to figure out how to do that. Yes, sir.
I've had those rains the previous year, and my pond's held up.
Right. I mean, that's my concern is that...
That's the excuse I want to avoid.
Right.
It's, there's, and we do, it's not, I'm not looking to point blame. I'm looking to say, hey, let's as a community realize that maybe these methods aren't right for this property. What can we do to come together? I'm not pointing at the finger, I'm not pointing the finger. I want to be part of the solution. But when we realize the model is wrong, are we going to leave our residents behind?
Right.
Are we going to run over them? We just going to say, sorry, we'll take the tax money and move on?
Right. Those people that have been here shouldn't be punished for that. I one-hundred percent agree with you.
I agree.
Yeah, that's where I'm coming from.
I would even add to what the mayor says. Because we know that we have unusual weather, we need to prepare for it. It's just, it's the same thing that we had advanced building standards for increased high wind, because those are things that we've dealt with. So if we've had these massive rains, then we need to be prepared to deal with that and make sure we protect our community.
And obviously, we weren't when this development happened, and so I would like to see what we can do to work with him to fix that.
Well, I think the thing that we have to understand here is, this is our first effort.
Right.
At trying to make improvements in these codes. I don't think we're done by a long shot. We'll continue to evaluate. Maybe we've got some of this too strong. I mean, we're not going to go into closed-minded at the point that if we ever take it here, we can't bring it back a little bit, but we have to make some changes to prevent your situation from happening again.
Right. And one of the fears that I would add to you guys that I have is, the longer this goes on, I'm dealing with wetlands and floodplain mapping increases if this stuff still goes on. There's areas of my property I can't mow seasonally because of the rains, which I was able to earlier. And it's because of new inflow areas that didn't exist before that were created to let the water shed off of the development property. If it was shed in the property in the spots where it was intended to or naturally occurring, then I wouldn't have that problem. But not being able to mow the grasses because of the water, cactiles growing up, stuff like that, that's what's going to get me in trouble with wetlands groups. Or not in trouble, but that's what's going to define those wetland maps. They're going to keep me from being able to use my property the way I want to use it.
All right, and let me, and I would, and maybe Melissa and I can reach out to you since you're in Moore, too, and we'd love to continue the conversation and see what we might be able to work with our city manager and...
There's no, I'm not, I know people on every side of this. So I've got friends that you would think would be in a position to be my enemies. It's not that way with me. We want to be a part of the solution and work together.
We just need to come up with a solution. Yep.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks very much. We'll go to our next item, four.
Did we finish?
Yeah.
Yep.
Consider approval of an emergency provision for ordinance number nine-seven-two-two-one, finding it immediately necessary for the preservation of peace, health, safety, and public good of the city of Moore and the inhabitants. Therefore, that the provisions of this ordinance be put into full force and effect. An emergency is hereby declared to exist by reason whereof. This ordinance shall take effect and be in full force and effect from and after the date provided herein as provided by law.
Motion to approve.
I have a question. Randy, do you consider this effective under this ordinance? Does it meet the requirements?
I think this qualifies as an emergency.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Item five is consider approval of a contract with Freeze and Nichols, Inc. in the amount of ninety-nine thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars for Lake Thunderbird TMDL compliance plan update.
Mayor and council, this contract with Freeze and Nichols is to review our, to review our TMDL monitoring program that is required by the state of Oklahoma in accordance with a court action. So the TMDL program, we are required to monitor our daily, or, sorry, our quarterly output of our pollutants within the stormwater system, and the program requires us to, after a five-year period, collect the results, analyze them, and report to DEQ basically how we have been doing over the past five years. This contract will do that as part of a monitoring plan. It will also prepare a new five-year plan for us moving forward using those data points to recommend both structural and non-structural improvements to help us meet our targets. If you have, this is a budgeted item, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So are we doing this monitoring ourselves now, or are we currently using someone to do it?
Veolia is monitoring. They actually have a storm reaction team. So at a qualifying storm event, they will go out and take samples from predetermined sites.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Bring us to number six is consider authorizing an engine in-frame overhaul for sanitation truck number thirteen-seven-six-three in the amount of twenty thousand five hundred two dollars seventy-four cents to rush trucks as sole source repair facility for Cummins Engine.
So moved.
Go ahead.
Did you want to say anything about it, or?
Well, the mayor has moved, so.
I'll second it.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Who was the first? I'm sorry.
Mayor.
Mayor.
I did.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Number seven is consider acceptance of a quote for the purchase of a six-foot black vinyl chain-link fence with park, maintenance, and quarantine entry gates, and a concrete mow strip along fence line from Norman Fence Company in the amount of thirty-two thousand four hundred fifty dollars as the lowest quote.
Mayor and council, this is to create a grassy area that will be east of the dog park at Buck Thomas. It will alleviate the massive numbers of dogs on the area that is well-worn, and they'll be moved over to the grassy area so that hopefully the grass can grow, or we can do some maintenance on the present dog park.
All right. Any questions?
Just budgeted?
Yes.
Okay.
Most to approve.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item eight is consider authorizing utilization of public works maintenance contract with Silver Star Construction for the removal of an asphalt and concrete walking trail at Buck Thomas Park in replacement with an eight-foot concrete walking trail with concrete pads and with trashcans, bench locations, and park rule signage, along with the purchase and installation of two thirty-foot by six-foot iron bridges at a total estimated budget cost of two-hundred-sixty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-one dollars and ninety-four cents.
Mayor and council, this is to replace the walking trail that is there right now, made of asphalt. It's got a lot of potholes and cracks, and it's well-worn and needs to be replaced, and this is a budgeted item. We are installing two of the bridges that look similar to the ones at Central Park due to the fact that the ones that are there are very old and are becoming a little bit dangerous. So we'd rather replace them when we have the walking trail replaced.
This is a replacement of the entire walking trail at Buck Thomas? All the asphalt?
Yes, plus some concreted areas to match it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item passes. Number nine is consider acceptance of a quote from Advanced Exercise in the amount of thirty-two thousand one dollar for the budgeted purchase of twenty Life Fitness IC5 indoor cycles.
Mayor and council, this is to replace the twenty that we have on site now, and they are the original that when we, when the station was originally built. So it's time to replace these with newer models. The ones that we have will be put in surplus.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. I'm glad that we're able, we keep the equipment in good working order and new over there. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item ten is consider authorizing the budgeted purchase of eighty-two Paradigm air and surface contaminant units in the amount of ninety-nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars from Eagle Disinfection Group as a sole source provider to be used at fire stations, police department, municipal court, the station at Central Park, and City Hall using CARES Act funds.
Mayor and council, the fire department had approached me a while back and asked if we look into the air purification and disinfection units. They were approached, I guess, by Oklahoma City, and Oklahoma City uses it in their police and their, all their fire stations. It's also used at the airport and all of the mass transit in Oklahoma City as well. It is the only units that we could find that disinfected the surfaces and the air both, so it would not, it would, we would not need to fog anymore as well. We went through, the assistant chief, Ryan Marler, and myself went through the, each of the buildings. We found out where we could place them. There are two different types of units. One would be wall-mounted units. The other ones are floor. They cover about three thousand square feet. So in total, we would need a total of, I believe it was eighty-two, eighty-two, and the total was ninety-nine thousand two hundred eighty dollars. I would add that the replacement kits are going to cost about twenty-two thousand per year for maintenance, for changing the filters and that sort of thing for these units.
Okay. So do we have, have we made preparations to get that money in the budget also?
That's, this CARES Act.
It's CARES Act.
Budget, yes.
Yeah. The CARES Act funding will purchase the units, and then we'll have money in the budget for the maintenance part of it.
Okay, all right, very good.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes. Item carries. Item eleven is consider authorizing the purchase of one license plate reader system in the amount of seventeen thousand three hundred forty dollars from Motorola Solutions, Inc. from the United States General Service Administration, contract pursuant to Part Seven, Section seven dash two oh five six.
Mayor and council, this purchase is in support of our partnership with the district attorney's office. It will be used to support the district attorney's drug and violent crime task force. This drug and violent crimes task force is our city of Moore's de facto narcotics unit. We don't have a narcotics unit inside the police department. We rely on them. They operate extensively within the city of Moore, and we recommend approval.
Real quick, what will this be used specifically for? License plate reader, it sounds like driving up and down the streets looking for expired tags. What's its...
Yes, sir. These pieces of equipment can be mounted to poles, but this particular one will be mounted to a vehicle, and what it does is, it... And what it does is it tracks not local warrants and not minor traffic violations, but like stolen vehicles and wanted vehicles for kidnappings, murders, major types of crimes that the district attorney's office would work. And what it's doing, it's reading hundreds, if not thousands, of tags a minute, and tags that would not be known to that officer, but that are in NCIC or OLETS as wanted vehicles and would flag the officer that, hey, this vehicle just passed you.
Okay.
Do we have any currently that are in, that are in use in the city of Moore?
No, ma'am.
So, this will be our first?
Yes, Norman and Oklahoma City have them in use.
Do we have plans to purchase more in, like additional in other years, or is this kind of as needed?
Councilman, this is one of these situations where we kind of really want to see what this does and the benefit that it's extensive purchase price, and so we don't want to just be frivolous with that money. So, we're going to try this year and see what the results are, and if we have success with it, we would be open to buying more. But at this point, there is no plans.
Okay, thank you.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion in a second.
This is budgeted?
Sir, this will be paid for out of seizure funds.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you. Call the vote, please.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item number twelve is approve an interlocal agreement between the city of Moore and the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics and Dangerous Drugs for COPS Anti-Methamphetamine Program Task Force for sharing of local and state resources to combat methamphetamine in the city of Moore and the state of Oklahoma.
Mayor and council, the Oklahoma Bureau of Narcotics received a grant for enforcement of methamphetamine. This partnership between Moore and OBN would allow us to leverage funds from that grant that was obtained by OBN to combat meth-related crimes locally. We'd recommend approval.
Motion to approve.
Second. And I just, one question, sometime, could you either provide us information just through an email or through books or something? What, what is the current situation in our community with drugs? I know they're in every community, but is there anything that we're having a particular issue with? And I would just be, I'd be curious. I know so much, so much of that happens below the waterline. You don't really see it until something major happens. But what, what challenges is the community of Moore facing when it comes to drug crimes?
So, we'd be, I'd be more than happy to provide a report on that. Just in short, methamphetamine still in Oklahoma is our number one abused crime, of course, number one abused drug. Of course, heroin is significantly up on the rise. Heroin is taking place of some of the prescription pain, oxycontin, and different things like that. So, we are seeing more heroin than in years past, but still across the state of Oklahoma, and Moore is no different. Meth is our number one problem. Any crimes, our crime data, or if you look at our crime trends around methamphetamine, what you're going to find is they are very similar to, on a per capita basis, to Oklahoma City. So, anything that Norman or Oklahoma City is experiencing, just simply by our geographical location, we're seeing the same things. Now, there are parts of our community that see higher influences of it than others, but I can provide some data on that.
Thanks very much. We had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item thirteen is consider approval of agreement with Infrastructure Management Services, IMS, in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars for professional services to complete a comprehensive paving condition survey, pavement management study of the city of Moore's street system.
Mayor and council, we have approximately three-hundred-and-twenty-five miles, centerline miles, of arterial roads, collection roads, collector roads, and residential roads. And the value of that pavement asset is estimated somewhere around three-hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars. And what, the purpose of this study is to, we'll have, they'll come in with vans that have sensors, lasers, cameras. They detect cracks in the pavement. They do deflection testing. That also determines what the base underneath that pavement is and basically come out with what's called a pavement condition index number for each one of these roads that we're going to have them travel over. And as a result, what that'll do is they'll come back and they'll provide a recommended rehabilitation and maintenance program over a five-year period to kind of give us a road or a path to follow with our, our maintenance. Typically, what happens in most communities, and we're no different than, than most communities, is that they, it's easy to spot the problems that we see within the different types of streets that need to be replaced because over time they've deteriorated to such a condition, you can't hardly drive down them. Those are the easy ones to spot, but those are also the most expensive that we have to, with regards to cost for replacing them. It's like your motor in your car. If you don't put any oil in your car and provide any maintenance, you know, there's that, there's that curve where, you know, it's brand-new and it's going through, everything's fine, but then it starts dropping off, you know, to where you got to replace the engine. And, and so, what we want to do is to be able to take a look in, how can we? It'll provide methods of rehab and repairs, overlays, where you can, where we can spend and take a look at those roads that, that are in good condition and maybe fair condition, and maybe spend a thousand, or a hundred thousand dollars and do overlays, which will give us a lot longer life for that street versus just focusing in those that have to be completely replaced because then you don't do your repair, or your rehabilitation and maintenance. And those good and fair-conditioned roads become all of a sudden very poor, and then you're spending ten, hundred times more for replacement costs. And so, what Infrastructure Management Services will provide is a report. The end result will be a report that'll give us some guidance on how we should look at long-term maintenance and rehabilitation of our streets. The cost for the, for the study and the data collection is one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand seven-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. The funding source is broken up into two sources. The arterial roads would be funded through the transportation impact fee, and then the residential streets would be funded through Fund Twelve, the half-cent sales tax.
So, do we own this data when we get it?
Yes.
Okay, and how long does it take to collect it?
What they've indicated is that we'd be looking somewhere in the neighborhood of six to eight months for them to provide us all of the, to come back with a report for us.
Okay. Most to approve. We have had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item fourteen is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice mayor.
Before we make our nominations, I just want to thank Councilman Ham for the job that he's done this past year. Absolutely. I don't think, I don't think any of us could have anticipated what was going to be required of the vice mayor when we voted this time last year, but you did a great job, and I just want to thank you.
Well, thanks very much. I do appreciate it, and it's an honor to get to, to serve and serve at it, so thank you.
With that being said, two years ago, we as a council decided that term of the vice mayor was going to run one year, and it was going to move from ward to ward. First year was Ward One, last year was Ward Two, this year's Ward Three, and so I would like to nominate Louis Williams as vice mayor.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've had a motion, and Louis, you'll, you'll accept that nomination?
Jason's speech did sound like you were about to call.
We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Just so you know, I asked before, so.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Abstain.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. We'll go to item fifteen is consider the appointment of Councilman Mark Ham to serve as a member of the ACOG Board of Directors, Intermodal Transportation Policy Committee, Garber Wellington Policy Committee, and the Ninety-One Association Board of Directors with the, with the remaining city council members to serve as alternates.
So moved.
Second, and thank you.
Phil Willen?
Yes.
And thank you for doing that, Councilman Ham.
Absolutely. Appreciate it when y'all are able to fill in when, when I can't. So, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item sixteen is the consent docket. A is receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held June seventh, 2021. B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2020 dash 2021 in the amount of nine-hundred-twenty-one thousand six-hundred-fifty-nine dollars and fifty-six cents.
Most to approve.
Second. We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item consent docket passes. Item seventeen is consider awarding bid number two zero two one dash one two A for piping materials for the SELS Sewer Force Main Improvement Project to IC, ISCO Industries Incorporated in the amount of two million two-hundred-twelve thousand five-hundred-forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents as the lowest responsive bidder.
Mr. Chairman and trustees, the items seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen are all, all three companion items for the same project. What item seventeen is, deals with is, because of the rapid increase in the cost of material, we've, we've been looking at different ways to try to reduce the overall cost of some of these projects, specifically dealing with the southeast lift station project. And so, this first project, item seventeen, we went out to bid for just the piping material, where the city would purchase the piping. That way, we wouldn't have the ten, twelve percent markup from the contractor that would be awarded the project, and then also his maintenance bond wouldn't include the five percent of that overall cost. We did receive three bids for, for the piping material, and the pipe that we're purchasing is thirty, approximately three-point-three miles of thirty-six-inch HP pipe. And the low, we recommend that you award to the lowest responsive bidder, which was ISCO Industries. Their, the dollar amount was two million two-hundred-and-twelve thousand five-hundred-forty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents. We would recommend approval.
Company that was on the north side up there, that they actually bid on this. We have a company in town that makes this PVC pipe for other cities. We have a, not an orness, but we, we have a deal that basically says if we have the opportunity to buy in, in the city, we do. And the reason I ask is because after every major tornado up there, they open up their whole unit up there and feed half the town. So, I would hate to miss the opportunity not to give it to them. I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of it.
It looks like the bids are on two seventy-eight. Was it Ferguson Water Works or Corin Maine?
I don't know.
Are the only other two people that?
We only received, we only received three, three bids, three companies submitted bids on it. And this particular pipe is, is not PVC pipe, it's a HDP pipe, which is poly pipe.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we didn't leave somebody out that helps take care of the city.
Sure.
And so, do you know roughly what this percentage was, what this is above? How much above is this contract compared to what we were originally estimating?
Well, even, even overall, this is fairly high just as a result of the, when I say high, it's, when we're looking at what's been occurring over the last six months. I think I mentioned to y'all before where we were buying some PVC pipe. That was, it used to be twenty-nine dollars a foot, and right now it's forty-two dollars a foot. Or I'm sorry, it was, it was nine dollars and twenty-nine cents a foot, and now it's over forty-two dollars a foot. Even, even stainless steel bands to repair water lines used to be, six months ago, we were able to purchase them for eighty dollars, and now they're three-hundred-and-forty dollars. And so, you know, in comparison to two thousand and fifteen, when this project started, the overall combination of, of the materials, the construct, the construction contractor is still higher than was originally estimated in 2015. And we can, we attribute that to, you know, just what's happened during the pandemic and manufacturer's supply and demand.
Well, it's happened to everybody. I was just curious at what pace this is happening at, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's been going up. They won't hold their prices for more than, well, the reason we, we, the main reason that we decided to go forward originally on the piping material is that they wouldn't hold their prices for, for more than ten days.
We hold ours for seven.
Yeah, so, yeah, and, and so we wanted to lock it in as soon as we could. But, you know, unfortunately, all prices have escalated, but we do believe that we have saved some money just from the ability to, typical markups are not part of this particular project.
All right, did we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item eighteen is consider awarding bid number two zero two one dash zero one two B for valve material for the Seals, SELS Sewer. Okay, Southeast Lift Station Sewer. You're not vice mayor yet.
Sorry.
Sewer Force Main Improvement Project to Hanes Equipment Company, LLC, in the amount of one-hundred-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-seventy-five dollars as the lowest responsive bidder.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item nineteen is consider awarding a construction contract to the lowest responsive bidder. What is that?
Craft.
Craft and Reynolds in the amount of three million five-hundred-nine thousand six-hundred-forty dollars. And I already forgot, for the.
Southeast.
Southeast Lift Station Sewer Force Main Improvement Project.
I ain't helping you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a, a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Item twenty is receive the court-appointed commissioner's report and authorize placement of the funds into a court based on the commissioner's estimates of just compensation due to the property owners by reason of taking the property for the construction and maintenance of the southeast basin gravity flow sanitary sewer line improvement project.
Motion to approve.
We've had a motion.
Second.
And a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item carries. Thank you, Jerry. Item twenty-one is consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominees, or nominations, and elect a vice chair of the trust. Who's, who's serving there now? Maybe Adam?
Well, I'm secretary. It is Adam. Make a motion to keep Adam.
Okay.
Second.
We've had a motion in a second for Adam Webb in that position. Would you call the vote?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Consider, and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the trust.
Make a motion, and Melissa continues.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote?
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Abstain. I mean, I was going to vote for myself, but since Louis didn't.
Okay, item passes. Thank you.
Mark did.
Yeah, yeah. Recess the, at this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item twenty-three is our consent docket. Item twenty-three is our consent docket. A, we will receive and approve the minutes of the regular more risk management meeting held June seventh, twenty twenty-one. B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one in the amount of four hundred one thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars and seventy-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Item twenty-four, considering if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the more risk management board.
Who's in now?
Do we know who that is? We'd never.
I think it might be me, but I'm not a hundred percent.
I nominate Danielle McKenzie. Oh, it's me?
Oh, good.
Oh.
How's you?
I already made a nomination.
So who's doing it?
Danielle.
Danielle?
Take the vote.
Okay.
I've never done anything.
All right, we've had a most, we had a motion, did we have a motion and a second? We got that. Call the vote, please.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Saying.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
All right. Item twenty-five is considered and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the more risk management board.
Make a motion for Jason Blair.
Second.
Second.
All right, had a motion and a second for Jason. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Saying.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Well, gosh, I'm like the only one that like.
I've got one for you. Don't worry, I've got one coming up for you, Mark.
Yeah, we're always.
Okay, recess the more risk management meeting and convene the more economic development authority meeting.
Call the vote, please.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Jason Blair?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Glenn Lewis?
Here.
Adam Webb? Mark Ham?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Item twenty-seven is the consent docket. Receive and approve the minutes of the regular more economic development authority meeting held May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Item B is ratify action of the city council made on June seventh, twenty twenty-one regarding approval of FY twenty twenty-one budget supplement to budget funds and related expenses for the twenty twenty-one B and twenty twenty-one C sales tax notes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Item passes. Item twenty-eight is consider if and if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a chair of the more economic development authority.
I make a motion to appoint Mark Ham.
Second.
All right, okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Item passes. Item twenty-nine, considering if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a vice chair of the more economic development authority.
Who is that currently?
I think it's Adam, yeah.
Make a motion, we nominate Adam Webb.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. Item thirty is considering if deemed appropriate, accept nominations and elect a secretary of the more economic development authority.
I believe it's Melissa right now.
Who's, anybody?
Make a motion, it's Melissa.
Melissa, okay, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes. At this time, we'll recess the more economic development authority meeting and reconvene the city council. All right, I'll just let the record reflect that all members that were present are still present. Item thirty-one is new business. We did have one citizen sign up, Ms. Vicky Heeflin. Am I saying that right? Are you still here, Vicky?
Is there another one underneath it?
Well, he already spoke.
Okay.
Are you Vicky? Yeah, okay. Yeah, if you'll just come on up here and state your name and address, and it just has a reason for addressing the council, you wanted to discuss floodlights in residential areas. Thanks for coming.
I would like to discuss.
Uh-oh.
My goodness.
Yes, there you go.
Floodlights in residential areas. I live in the Rock Creek area. And there is a neighbor on the side by his garage door has put in two floodlights. One small one and one great big one. And sometimes he puts them on the brightest that there can be. And it's about fifteen feet from my bathroom window, from the lights to my window. And it shines right in my window like an explosion. Just bright and with a big, like a fireball in there. And it makes it very difficult for me. And I have had other people complain about like floodlights in the residential areas. The ones in back of me also have floodlights, but it's far enough away that it doesn't bother me. I don't know if it bothers other people at mine. But I contend that there doesn't even need to be floodlights except as sensors in residential areas. And the neighbor that I'm talking about actually fixes his lights to go right to my window. And then when he thinks someone is going to look, he puts them down. And he unscrews the big one and puts the little one on. So they're two little lights. And like I said, to make it quick, I just don't see the need for floodlights except as sensors in a residential area at all anyway.
Okay, and what ward is that?
It's one. Did you say your address, Vicky? Did you mention your address for the record? That's okay.
Twenty-six, twenty-nine, Southeast Seventh Street.
Okay.
In the Rock Creek area.
Okay, thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you.
For coming. Any other citizens want to speak that didn't sign up? Okay, come right on up. And again, if you'll just give us your name and address for the minutes.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Wiggs. My address is five two seven Woodholler Lane. And I appreciate the opportunity to get to speak in front of you tonight. I've lived in Moore for thirty-two years. There are two great things about Moore, the Pioneer Library System and the station. Unfortunately, my family and I can no longer go to the station because of increased safety risks. So I'm not sure if I should be addressing you or maybe the parks board. But I'm here tonight and maybe you can tell me if I need to go somewhere else.
No, you're at the right place.
You're at the right place.
Okay, so my family and I have been members of the station since it opened five years ago. We enjoy the aquatic center in particular. This summer, because of imminent safety risks that we experience every time we go, we can no longer go to the station. So I feel like we're probably not the only ones. I hear people inside the recreation center share the same concerns. They were supposed to be here tonight, but unfortunately, they weren't able to come. But I just, I feel like the, the issues are compounding and escalating. And I feel like if the city does not get a handle on it, something tragic could happen. But I notice things like fighting, lots of inappropriate activities between teenagers that are going on outside the station as well as inside the bathrooms. It was to the point that my twelve-year-old cannot go to the bathroom by herself. I have to go with her, even if she is in the kid area. I don't let her go to the restroom unless she notifies me and I follow her. My granddaughter's daycare went to the station two weeks ago. There was a fight in the bathroom. It terrified the toddlers. The aquatic staff was extremely rude to the daycare, to the point the daycare will no longer take the children. And they have gone monthly for the past five years. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention and hopefully these issues can be mitigated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is the first I've heard of this. What can we do about this? Let's fix this.
Yeah, this is not the first that I've heard of.
If I may?
Yeah.
If I may?
Yes.
Just give you more of the observations I have seen. So my husband took the girls to the daddy-daughter dance on Friday. Perfectly fine. There were five hundred people there. The station is equipped to handle that kind of crowd. There were not any safety issues. The dive-in movies are disastrous. If you have not participated in a dive-in movie or your friends or family and you would like to see it firsthand, I would encourage you so you can see it for yourself.
Disastrous just because there's too many people or what?
Safety, safety concerns, fighting. The police were actually called. The first dive-in movie experience, which the police probably should have been notified sooner before it escalated. Teenagers are pulling bathing suits down, taking inappropriate pictures in the bathrooms as well as outside. I've seen that myself. Parents are supposed to be with any kid under the age of fifteen. I personally have seen adults, I'm not sure if they're the actual parental figure, but will walk in and walk right back out. Like I said, multiple fights and a lot of the fights are not always elevated to police intervention. So like the daycare, when the kids were there and there was a fight in the bathroom, the police didn't come to that. I have seen things like that myself, but there have been two different situations just this summer where police were, were called and my family and I left. And we will not be back to the aquatic center.
This isn't a new topic. This is something that I know our city manager and our police department have been dealing with for the last couple of weeks since the dive-in movie incident. So I don't know if Brooks or Chief Gibson wants to discuss this more.
We did meet with, I did meet and Sue Wood, our parks director, did meet with the police department last week. And so we have implemented changes for the dive-in movies, for future dive-in movies to where hopefully we won't have the same type of incident. And we're also doing other things to address the loitering outside of the station. That's where most of the problems occur is, is outside of the building as opposed to inside. And so a lot of the same things that we did last year when we had a little flare-up of juvenile activity and we were able to get it clamped down pretty fast. Appreciate you mentioning the restroom incidents because I had not heard that until tonight and certainly look into that and address those. So thank you for that.
And one of my concerns is for those instances of the restroom and all that, all the lifeguards are young individuals. And is there several adults there that are helping supervise as well? Are the lifeguards just responsible for it? Because that's, that's a concern because, I mean, they're the age of the kids that are causing the issues.
I will say the lifeguards are, they're great, but they're not in a position of authority.
Right.
So like when they have the safety breaks for the pool, nobody's getting out that's under sixteen and the lifeguard said, yeah, we can't do anything about it. But the lifeguards aren't responsible for the restrooms. So there are aquatic staff that are supposed to be monitoring those things, but like you said, they're the same age. So there needs, there needs to be supervision in people over the age of sixteen or eighteen because the kids that are causing the issues are not going to respond to someone their own age.
Right.
I know, I know that Brooks talked about that it's still in works because it is, the dive-in movie situation, I think, was only three weeks ago. And I, I know it was awful. But we did, we have talked about a zero tolerance policy. So when there is something like that, and that's still forthcoming and developing, but talking about a zero tolerance when something happens, just like, you know, with school, if there's fighting, there's zero tolerance on that type of thing. Same thing with the station. That's the goal.
And Brooks, I don't know if it was last year, maybe even a little further, a while back, we had approved a contract with somebody to allow them to hire off-duty more police officers and Cleveland County Sheriff's deputies. Are we, do, do we have off-duty versus a security officer versus an off-duty officer? You know, there's a difference. Do we have, what kind of security do we have?
We have, we have off-duty officers either from our own police department or from the Cleveland County Sheriff's Department. And so during aquatic season, we have a person inside the station and then we have a person in the aquatic center. We are in the process of constructing an area in the, in the middle of the pool area for, for the security officer to be stationed there. So they're more in the, in the middle of the crowd as opposed to off to the side and, and then having to go in that way. So that's, that's in the works and hopefully will be completed here fairly quickly. The dive-in movie, what happened there was it was a big walk-up crowd night because the advanced ticket sales were pretty slow and so we weren't, we didn't expect a big crowd, but it ended up being a, a good night. And the event ended up selling out and other people that were not able to get in chose to just loiter around outside the facility. And that's where the problem started. And so, you know, we've worked with the police department to have the special events like that on everybody's calendar so that more security can be provided and hopefully we don't have those situations.
Okay, and can the, one last question, can the, I don't know about the sheriff stuff, but he's about the off-duty more officers. Would they be able to issue citations if they were to, you know, at the school, if there's fighting or things like that, they'll just write the, the student a ticket? And then that kid has taken home to mom and dad and do they have the authority to do that or does it have to be an officer who's currently on duty?
No, I believe they trespass them there, but then if it escalates, then, then the police department is called and then they handle it.
Because I agree. I mean, something bad is gonna happen or we're gonna lose more residents in the support of more residents that are participating in the station and the aquatic center and we don't want that to happen.
Yeah, if I may, I know, personally know three families who are members and are paying, but are not participating. But I don't want to just focus on the dive-in movie because it's not just isolated to the dive-in movie. And I will say there is a difference when police officers, on-duty officers are present as opposed to security guards. I go to the station about five days a week, not to necessarily the aquatic center, but inside the recreation center. On Thursday evening, there were two officers that were walking around inside and I asked them why they were there. And they said for prevention and the atmosphere was very different. So people know if it's a security guard, whether they are employed as an, as an officer, they know if they're off-duty and employed as a security officer. Because the environment was much different. And I even went inside to the aquatic center just to kind of peek around and look. It was, it was family-friendly and the difference, I think, the officers.
Sure.
No, and we desire for it to be that way. We've just got to figure out where the balance is at, so.
All right, thank you.
Really appreciate you coming.
Thanks for coming tonight, sharing that. Anybody else would like to speak? Okay, any, anything from the city council or city manager?
Well, I was gonna let the members of the council speak first.
Yeah, I just, I think I just, I got it out of order. Hey, I was just gonna ask for the, could we get a, I haven't had one in a while, an update on the Fourth Street underpass project. I mean, what, where we're at, the plans, what right-of-way, we're still needing security, just where all that is at? And maybe an updated timeline?
Sure.
Today, but.
Well, I mean, it's just real simply, I think we have three pieces of property that have, that are in condemnation. We've received the reports from the commissioners and I think we've tendered the money into the court. BNSF has the, they made comments on our sixty percent plans. We have submitted the ninety percent plans. They're in the process of reviewing those. And so we still have to do the utility relocates. And so, uh, we still have to do the utility re- relocates, uh, but you know, knock on wood, everything proceeds according to schedule. Hopefully construction can start this time next year.
Okay. And then the, the last comment that I would have is, uh, this is, uh, mowing the right-of-ways on 12th, on, uh, Eastern, uh, north of 12th Street to 27th. I mean, there's weeds that are, you know, three foot, four foot tall. I know it's an ongoing thing, but.
Well, uh, you know, uh, Vice Mayor, as usual, you lead right into what I want to talk about.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else having?
Just, just an up, just an update on the mowing. Obviously we've had a lot of rain and so we're in the, in the process of getting caught up. One of the things that's been even more challenging for us this year is one of the contractors that we've used in the past, uh, for Buck Thomas Park or somewhere like that, uh, they have had problems getting employees to do any of the work. And so, uh, so some of the people we've been able to lean on in the past, we, we can't this summer at, to date. And so, uh, it's meant more work for our staff and more overtime, but, uh, you know, we get a decent stretch of weather. Hopefully we'll get everything caught up and, and then be able to maintain it. So, but we, we are working on it.
Great. Thank you. Item 32 is executive session. Section 307 Title 25 Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It's the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. A, consider approval of the fiscal year 2021 dash 2022 contract between the City of Moore and the Fraternal of Police Lodge 131 as authorized by, uh, 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B2. And item B is consider approval of the fiscal year 2021 dash 2022 contract between the City of Moore and the, uh, IAFF Local 2047 as authorized by 25 Oklahoma State Statute 307B2.
Make a motion, we convene to executive session.
Second. We've had a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Jason Blair?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Glenn Lewis?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, we'll be in executive session. Thanks.
Lots of things to sign. Most of it's already up there.